At 7 o'clock, we will call the regular common council meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Nabel is excused.
Oberstadt.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Slowinski.
Here.
Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
McComb.
Yes.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
By yes, I assume that meant here.
No.
All right. And so we do have a quorum, so we'll continue. Please join me in standing for our closing debate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome to another exciting episode of Stevens Point Common Council. I'm going to be kicking my glasses off. I've got new glasses. I can't cheat and see under them as easy because the lenses are a little bit bigger. You'll see me moving my glasses. Yes, I know, it's probably not that far away from bifocals. Spring, still light out. Spring is in the air. I've seen a robin. Again, it's still light out. I've tapped my maple trees, and the clincher is complaints have now shifted from plowing to potholes. I would like to wish a very happy birthday to our council president, Melissa Johnson.
Yay. Thank you.
I'll give you a brief update on our parks director. As you very likely know, our longtime parks director, Tom Schrader, will be retiring, and the search and discussions have been ongoing in that regard. We have posted the job. We've got a bunch of applications so far, and we're in the process of evaluating those opportunities. I want to thank all of the people who helped with the flooding issues in the area. The citizens and staff were very proactive in clearing the storm drains. City staff at water, streets, and even parks, some who were working 12-hour shifts on moving snow, clearing catch basins, and preparing for the last several weeks for possible scenarios. With the amount of snow we had, we knew that if we had a couple of very warm days, the snow would melt rather rapidly. We talked about what we could do to mitigate those problems, and the staff reacted very well. And I think that's one of the main reasons that we were luckier than some. So they, even after those warm days, they continued to work long hours to clear the flooding from roads, pumping water, and engaging every possible piece of equipment, even going so far as to rent equipment that we could to help mitigate some of those problems. And I want to send a special thank you out to Chief Finn and his staff at Portage County, our Stevens Point Fire Department and the EMS there. We assisted a couple of other places in evacuations. The police department had the MRAP vehicle doing evacuations and taking around crew members of other municipalities where they couldn't get through the water with their equipment. That equipment was used, and we helped out our neighbors where we could. So a very special thank you to everyone on the city staff and the citizens who helped their neighbors and helped clear the storm drains and the fire hydrants, things like that. We were luckier than some, but we weren't unscathed. And we got many reports of garages, sheds, yards, and even house and basement floodings. Most homeowner policies do not cover that type of water damage, so we want to remind people to check their policy. The county EM people are going to be here, emergency management people are going to be here doing a presentation very shortly, and they're going to talk a little bit about what they do. But they were instrumental in kind of controlling what was going on in the county. And they have some advice for residents and businesses who may have had damage. Document and take pictures of that damage, and contact your homeowners or business insurance carriers. Have your residents, our residents, and businesses call 211 so their damage can be documented. So 211 is the United Way hotline. If you have damage, document it. Contact 211 to let people know about that damage. And there's a threshold that we have not yet reached in Portage County to meet the qualifications for federal individual assistance. But if we do, we will make sure that those residents who have notified us are in turn notified that we have indeed reached that threshold. I know that almost every place in town is sold out of pumps, sold out of hoses, dryer fans, all those things. It's very challenging. If you do still need help, reach out. Social media, contact county emergency management. I know they had some sump pumps that were available for loan if you needed them. I think we're doing pretty good, and we're out of the danger zone right now because it looks like we're going to have freezing temperatures at night and moderately warm temperatures during the day, so I think we're going to hit a slower melt. But if you need help, reach out and ask. And you can contact the county emergency management, as I said. Contact your alder, contact my office, and we will do our best to make sure that that help arrives. With that, item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. We had some sheets, little white sheets of paper, for those who wish to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any agenda item that has not yet turned in one of these sheets? Okay? With that, we will go on to item number four, which is persons who wish to address the council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. We do not have anyone registered to speak, so we will move on to our presentation. And at this time, I'd like to welcome up Bob and James from the Portage County Emergency Management Department to give us a little overview on, well, first of all, introduce yourselves because you're relatively new, and then give us a little overview on what you and your department does. Have you come up to the podium up here, please?
Okay.
Lecturn, sorry, John.
Good evening, folks. Good evening. I'm Bob Winerd. I'm the county's emergency management coordinator. With me is my esteemed teammate and deputy, James Williams. And we're recent hires from the fall, but we have some experience and knowledge, and we're trying to share that with the county and all the jurisdictions within this county. So yes, the mayor's right. We've been busy. But with that, it's, there's actually a bigger thing going on with the county. We've had a lot of turnover the past few years from what we've heard, and...
Can I have you move a little closer to the microphone, please?
Sure thing. So, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Right. So there's been quite a bit of turnover over the many years in emergency management. It was combined with some other areas, and it was by leadership decided to pull apart emergency management from the other responsibilities. And with that, our orders were to totally rebuild the program and make it a viable program to support the county. So that's what James and I have been doing. So with that, it's been quite busy. We're going through the office, we're going through the emergency operations center, we're going through the plans, working with other municipalities in the county to make sure that they know that we're there to support them, not take over, but to support them in anything that might need, whether it's resources, information, advice, just to talk to them. So we like to do that quite a bit, and, but we've been so busy, it's been hard to get out to meet everybody. So with that, our staff is, right now is just James and I, but we have the sheriff's office as our management oversight. We do have the county's public safety and emergency management committee that we go to, and they support us. And we work well with the county exec and the county board chair as well to keep them in the loop. So currently, what we're doing is we're trying to support any of the towns right now with flooding, and there's quite a bit of it going on. Unfortunately, with what's happening with Mother Nature now, with the amount of snow falling, or the snow melting, there's not much that can be done, which is, for us, is very frustrating. So we're trying to support the towns as best we can, whether it's with sandbags, with the equipment, trying to get road signage up so that we can get those to the towns so they can put them up so cars don't go in and cause other problems. So with that, we do have sandbags available still. We have them up at the county highway department, and the municipalities can go pick them up. If they need a whole lot of them, just let us know, and we'll make sure that's coordinated so that someone's there to help them load the empty sandbags into the vehicle. And I'll let James talk a little bit about some of the things that he does.
So primarily, some of our job is focused on a couple of different grants that we use. One is the emergency performance management grant, which includes a plan of work that we develop with the state, Wisconsin Emergency Management Group, and produce a plan of work for items that we need to make sure we're focused on at the county level throughout the year. We also work a lot on the Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act. It's also known as EPRA, which deals with hazardous materials and hazardous items that occur in different plants and farms and stores throughout the Portage County area. So we work together with our partners in the community, both businesses and our hazmat teams at Plover, to make sure that we have a safe community and that everybody's aware of the requirements to inform the public about those chemicals. As Bob said, we work all the time on planning, but I think the biggest thing that I'd like to stress today is just thank you to the city of Stevens Point for helping out your neighbors, because I know last Thursday night, I got a call at 3:00 a.m., and your guys and your, or your equipment, your personnel were out helping the town, or the village of Plover, and they needed, they needed your help. So I appreciate that a lot.
Could you give us some contact information if someone needs to call your office? How can we get in touch with you, or phone call, email?
Sure. So of course, the information is up on our website. You can reach me at 907-346-1397. That's the phone number to my desk. You can, of course, reach us by email. I'll spell it out because it's really confusing, the way the county does their email, so it's So you can reach me at that if you remember at all. Otherwise, of course, it is up on our website. Bob's information is up there as well. I would like to add one thing as far as sandbags for the public. We've, Bob made an arrangement today with the city of, or the village of Plover that we're going to have the centralized location there where there's going to be sand delivered, sandbags for individuals, so people can go there, any people from, whether it's Stevens Point or the town of Grant, can go there to grab sand and sandbags.
Great. Thank you both very much. If anyone has questions or needs to contact either Bob or James, you can Google "Portage County Emergency Management," and their information will come up, or use the phone number and email provided. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is our consent agenda. Alder Niebone, you had a comment regarding the consent agenda?
Yes. There was a correction to the beekeeping permit that was made at the Public Protection Committee. We did change the name to Neighborhood Improvement Officer, but the next day, an eagle-eyed constituent said that we didn't indicate which property owners had to be notified. So if you look on Agenda Page 50 to the permit, number seven, we added the word "abutting" in front of properties. The applicant for the license notifies all residents of abutting properties. So they would have to identify, have to notify all their neighbors, because otherwise it just said "residents of properties," and it wasn't quite clear. So other than that, I just wanted to make that, make you aware of that word change.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And we do have two people registered to speak. Mary Ann, you want to go first? Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Lacheski, 1209 Wisconsin Street. And this is in regard to item regarding the Parks Commission's request to name the abandoned rail. That occurred because of this Canadian National moving out. I submitted a request to name the former Canadian National Rail line that is now a new trail in recognition of Reed Rochelot. For over four decades, Reed tirelessly gave of his time, talents, and finances to vigilantly monitor local government, do research, and campaigned for a myriad of municipal, county, and school issues and concerns both here and other Wisconsin communities. Yet, with the new trail being an extension of the Green Circle Trail and learning that in 1990 Reed was not in support of the trail, I would like to withdraw his name from consideration for the naming. I do not know what Reed's specific objections were. While the trail eventually completed and was successful, from what I do remember, not everything was smoothgoing when it was first proposed. Just briefly, there was some local objections from some property owners regarding measures and right of ways needed to accomplish portions of the trail, some routings that were needed to be redirected, and possibly there were some financial concerns. Mr. Schrader was certainly would be better remember the objections at that time involving the establishment of the trail. But I'd just like to ask tonight that hopefully Reed could be considered in the future if another opportunity arises in which his work, generosity, and long commitment to working and caring for so many communities could be recognized. As I remember Reed's old protest of the trail, it's unraveling my efforts to name the trail for him, which is a sign that his political self is still with us, and hopefully for a long time. Thank you, Reed, and thank you, everybody, and happy birthday, President Johnson.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Yes, Reed definitely left an impression on a lot of people. He's a good man these days. Next up, we have Jeff.
My name, excuse me, my name is Jeff Vauder, Village of Whiting resident, Stevens Point taxpayer.
Jeff, you didn't take your glasses off.
That's true. I'm addressing Agenda Number Six, also the naming of the trail. I first became aware that there was an interest in soliciting names from the public by a submission in the Portage County Gazette, simply says "City needs help in naming the new trail in Stevens Point." I'd like to read you a short portion of that, and it regards how you submit your suggestion for naming this trail. Proposals, quote, "Proposals for a specified name should be submitted to the Parks Commission at 2442 Sims Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin 54481 in written form, along with thorough documentation giving the reasons for the selection of the proposed name. Deadline for submission, March 1st, 2019." I'd like to applaud Stevens Point for a number of reasons. First of all, you sought out public input for this, and we always should seek that. Secondly, the public announcement in the Portage County Gazette was given with ample time. It wasn't one of these midnight things done after governor's race, done at the last thing at the edge of night, no discussion. Plenty of time was given. Secondly, or thirdly, this was announced in local media. It wasn't hush-hush, or only a few knew. Virtually, anyone who read the Portage County Gazette was aware of this. And finally, it was clearly defined in this article how to submit your trail name suggestions. The community, city of Stevens Point, you should be commended for that process. So how did it go? You should be happy to know that there were 19 trail submission names for the trails submitted. However, excuse me, of the 19 trail names submitted, five included the name of local residents, either living or deceased. No one showed up at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting to verbally promote any of the 18, any of 18 of the 19 trail name suggestions. And why would they show up? The protocol for submitting trail names did not mention an opportunity to speak in support of any of the suggestions. Put it in writing, submit it there, get it on there to the correct place on time, and document it. One of the 19 trail name submissions had two people show up to speak in support of that trail name. The two people that showed up in support of just one out of 19 names were both city of Stevens Point government officials. We wanted public input, did we not? The Parks and Rec Committee meeting was videotaped, recorded. I guess they don't use tape anymore. The video shows no debate whatsoever on any of 18 of the 19 submissions, none. The Parks and Rec Committee then proceeded to unanimously recommend their support for the one trail name on which the two city officials spoke in support. I have no problem with the naming of this trail in honor of Tom Schrader. Mr. Schrader has done a wonderful job in his position as Director of Parks and Recreation. My problem is that a lot of people, at least 19 such public citizens, spent a lot of time writing up their trail name and proposals and saw to it that their trail name submissions were submitted in written form as directed, in a timely fashion, on time, and submitted to the location requested. If you watch the video of the Parks and Recreation meeting, the impression that many of you may get is that there was one and only one trail name suggestion that was given open discussion and consideration. It appears this was a slam dunk, a done deal. No discussion prior to that meeting should have been done by the commissioners or by the, by the committee. That would have violated the law, discussing it before an open meeting. You had to believe that everyone that entered that room had this name and only this meeting, only this name, after giving a list of 19, and they wished to debate none of the other This is not the way to get public involved in your community, and that should be a goal of ours. If anything, this does more to discourage people from getting involved. Tonight, you'll be asked to accept the Parks and Recreation's trail name recommendation. I would like to ask the common council to motion to postpone accepting the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee until the next common council meeting, after which each of you has viewed the video of the Parks and Rec meeting. If you feel that the meeting passes your sniff test, and if you were to give this video to any of your constituents, it would pass their sniff test and promotes community involvement, then you can proceed with your vote to accept the trail naming at your next common council meeting. Thank you. One other thing, go Marquette, go Badgers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and go W Pointers, or UWSP Pointers. All right. So the consent agenda is before you. Alders, what are your wishes? Alder Niebone?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Oberstadt. Discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will...
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You scared me.
No, I saw that, yeah. I thought you were just still had it up in the book.
Moving slow tonight?
I apologize. 100%. I am so sorry. Alder Oberstadt, you have the floor.
I am a member of the Parks Board. Obviously, I was at this meeting, and I proudly made the motion to name that trail Schrader Connection. And this actually was not in the minutes, but I didn't think it was important enough that it was missing, that the minutes were incorrect. But I did note after the motion and the second that I really appreciated reading the list of suggestions, because a lot of the people that were nominated had a history long before my time on the council, or even here in Stevens Point. And I have no doubt in my mind that the Parks Board thoroughly read through those suggestions on their own and did not have any discussion prior to that meeting. It was really enjoyable to read about all of those people, and I do appreciate the time that citizens took to nominate and provide that additional information. Yet I am still very excited about the new name of Schrader Connection.
Thank you very much. President Johnson?
Yeah, I was about to raise my hand before I got scared. So I'm wondering if we could read the 19 names? Do we have them?
I can get them up soon enough. They were all included in the Parks Commission Agenda, which is also supplied to all of the alders, and it's available to the public. I understand the public doesn't always have time to read those. Give me a moment, and I will bring those up.
Just honoring the 19 names, I think.
Absolutely. Tom, are you looking it up? Do you have them? Could you?
Thank you.
Could you read the suggestions, please? You're much quicker than I am.
Blissfully Green, Spur Trail, Beyond Bliss, Rail Trail, Rail Line Trail, The Connection, The Connector, Judith Nantell, Never Ending Trail, Judith Nantail, Judith Nantell Trail, Sloman Trail, Honey Bear Trail, The Peeline, Wood Tick Trail, Judge Robert C. Jenkins Trail, Reed Rochel Memorial Trail, Bliss Avenue Rail Trail, Rail Trail, Tom Schrader Trail, and Bliss Trail.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Submitted paper trail.
Alder Phillips?
On this, this is the Public Protection, this application for the beekeeping permit?
Yes, sir.
Could we have that pulled for discussion?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I want to offer one suggestion, because Alder Person Oberstadt is right. There are a lot of very dedicated people in our community, and I think they're all very deserving. I would encourage the public to check out the list of names from the March Parks Commission Agenda and do a little research on your own. A lot of material was provided to the Parks Commissioners, so take a minute and read that to learn a little bit more about the history of Stevens Point and those dedicated people. So the motion before you is to approve the consent agenda with the item regarding the beekeeping policy. Hold for further discussion. If you are in favor of that motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Morrow?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
10-0. That is adopted. Alder Phillips, you have the floor.
Well, I guess I just wanted to have this vote on separately, because I think the people need to know if their alderpersons are representing their constituents by having beehives three feet from the property line and anything else that's in here. So I'm gonna, I will just move to approve this permit.
Thank you.
I understand the logic.
But I would like a roll call.
Thank you. So we need a second? Seconded by Alder Person Oberstadt. For those who, and I'm not going to say anything until after the vote, but I'll explain the logic. Alder Phillips is absolutely correct. Alder Niebone?
The wording is no hive shall be located closer than three feet. It does not mean it has to be three feet. It cannot be closer than. It could be five or 10, and it has to be at least 25 feet from a major building on an abutting lot. So we're not putting them, I mean, I want to make that clear. It's not, it has to be three feet. It can be no closer than.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, the motion is to approve the policy as set forth in the agenda. If you are in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
No.
Morrow?
Aye.
9-1.
If anyone has questions as to why Alder Phillips had made the motion but then voted against it, feel free to contact him afterwards, but it should be apparent. All righty, that is approved, and we are on to item number seven, which is a strategic plan request for proposals. The director's not here, but Kyle, do you want to speak on this?
I don't have anything to say.
Nothing to add? Okay. Alder Phillips?
Do we have a cost estimate on this already, or not?
We don't. Sorry, Alder, but we will once we get it.
I guess.
And that'll be up to this body to decide whether that's a reasonable price or not. President Johnson?
Are you looking for a motion to approve the request? I'd like to make that motion, and then I have a comment.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Oberstadt. We'll go to President Johnson first, and then, Tori, did you, I'm sorry. Alder Jennings?
I was, sorry, I was seconding. Sorry.
Gotcha.
Now, you're confused.
Now, you're confused.
I so am.
Yes. It was, it was the shriek that did it.
President Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the community development staff for working on this. They did allow me the opportunity to proof it, because I've worked on a number of these proposals in the past. I appreciate that opportunity. Strategic planning has been, it's a passion for me because it helps us plan the future. And it'll take our comprehensive plan, that's our 40,000-foot view of where we want to go, and bring it down to sort of street view. And I just really appreciate their work. I'm looking very forward to this. It's been one of my, the things I wanted to see done, so thank you, thank you, everyone, for making this happen.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, clerk, could you please call the roll? Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Moral?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is approved. Item number eight is an ordinance amendment regarding traffic, Section 9.05 Sub J, regarding parking restrictions on Peck Street at the intersection with Michigan Avenue. Alder Shore?
So moved.
Is it a move for approval?
Yes, please.
Seconded by Alder Person Jennings. Discussion. Hearing none, clerk, would you please call the roll? Moral?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero. Ten zero, that is approved, and in record time, we're adjourned at 7:31.